It was on the agenda. But with that, we need to go call the meeting to order and make a roll call. So, um, just call out your name and then you holler yes here or not. So, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Paul.
Here.
Councilmember Villa Lobos.
She's I'm here.
Here. And, uh, Councilmember Allen.
Here.
Councilmember McLeod.
Here.
And Councilmember Munker is not quite there yet. Oh, I see her. You're muted, Jan. Can you take your mute off? Should be. There you go.
All right.
Councilmember Munker, be present.
Right, present.
There you go.
Yeah, and Kent are also muted.
And the mayor, mayor's here, myself is here as well. Okay, so the way this is gonna work is Jared's gonna go be his, I think, got all the slides and stuff. Next thing up is the agenda, so we tried to have us a flag. Everybody see the flag?
Yes.
Okay, so let's stand and say, and say the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag. It works. It's not smooth, but it worked.
It did work well.
All right, now, public comments. Let me talk a little bit about public comments. We, we were gonna, one of the rules to do this video conferencing wise is that we have to be able to take in public comments. We, we posted on the agenda and, uh, the webpage that if they had public comments, they could be sent to us in writing. We were gonna put in there that, uh, they needed to be in by noon today to be able to be read, and they needed to be limited to five hundred words or less. So we could read them out loud. We did not have any by noon today. E- either through email or in the Dropbox. So there are no public comments for the night today, but we will try to continue to do that as long as we have to go, uh, put that up. So with that, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Four, which is the reports. And so, um, that's an old one there, Jared. That's not the current agenda.
We can't see you, Mayor.
What? Oh, well, that's because he's got it on, uh, screen view.
Well, you can.
No, he's just, no, your screen needs to be on your face.
Lower your, there you go.
Am I back again?
There you go.
All right, sorry. I lost myself. Okay, so let's go to, there should be some slides for the mayor's report, Jared.
Got them up.
All right, there you go. So, uh, first thing I want to speak to is our census activity. We are well below where we need to be from a self-reporting standpoint. Uh, as of last Thursday, I guess that is, uh, we were at twenty-two percent, which was below the national average of thirty-eight percent, well, below the state average of thirty-four, thirty-three, and below the county average of twenty-six. So, uh, we got, got some work to do. The process is kinda simple. Um, you can also use your phones, but I, I urge anybody listening to go off and please try to go get that stuff in. It does make a difference. Our ability to go get grants for the next ten years. So I, I urge everybody to please try to go get that filled out. Uh, the roadside maintenance project is continuing. They got Northwest River Road kinda finished and, uh, a good chunk of it downtown. But they're still working downtown. Uh, it's not done all the way yet, but they are making progress now. Uh, what do you wanna say that the crosswalk that connects Allen Bates Park to the other side of the road, which was kinda in the middle of nowhere originally, now connects it over there right close to Fanning Street. Uh, Dex Dot didn't come out and do that for us. So the former one's been taken out and the new one's in there. If you haven't been down there to Allen Bates, you'll see it. And wastewater treatment plant renewal finally has been approved by TCUQ. We got that last week. Uh, so that's good news. Took a lot of time, but we finally got it. Go to the next one here. Can you flip this? There you go. On our COV, uh, COVID-nineteen disaster activities, um, of course, the county stay homes, stay safe, uh, order was signed last week. Um, it runs through four and eight, except that they had a meeting over at the county commissioners today and extended it till four-thirty. So it's gonna run to the end of April. That matched it up with what the state's done. So they, they kinda mirror each other right now, and we're following what the county and the state have asked us to go do. Uh, the county order left the parks open. Uh, the state order left the parks open. Abbott did a little something today that closed some of the state parks down for a few days, they say. It's not a permanent thing, like it's not gonna go to the four and thirty. Uh, the parks are open for outdoor activities. However, both those orders shut down the playgrounds. And so we have put up some signs and surrounded them with police tape to say that had the kiddos stay off playground equipment. People can still walk in the park and, and exercise if necessary. However, if we continue to see people abusing the outdoor activity stuff down there, we've seen a number of times where they're it's hard to say that sunbathers are doing outdoor activities. I don't, I don't think that was the intent of that. So, uh, we've seen a couple of those, and the police folks are reminding them that that doesn't seem to really qualify and that please move on. But if that continues, or if we have a lot of out outside of the city kinda folks coming in and abusing it, we have, as the city level, the ability to shut those parks all the way down if we need to. So I don't wanna do that, but, but it's possible. Uh, we did request, uh, an account through the FEMA Grant Portal, uh, so that we can charge, uh, collect these costs and get it back to FEMA for consideration of, of payback. These, this is the seventy-five, twenty-five split where, uh, hopefully we can get seventy-five percent of our cost associated with the coronavirus paid for. Uh, we're going through that process, and as of yesterday, we've got a little more information on that, on, on things that we have to fill out to make this happen, but we're moving along that way. Uh, just for the councils and everybody's information, we, we also cranked up the cleaning service uh, there at City Hall, uh, to try to go get that done more often than once a week to, uh, protect our employees and, and keep them safe.
Good.
And there's one other thing that happened today that I'll share with you. That was a two-hour teleconference with the, from the governor's office. The only thing I really got out of that, that, that we need to get out to folks is the Small Business Association Loans, the, the Federal Care Act, this two mil, two trillion dollar thing they signed a week or so ago, uh, has some loans that, that, that can turn into being forgiven loans for small businesses. The intent of that forgiveness is as if, uh, you can retain your employees. So, um, we need to get that out to our restaurants. This was really directed at that kinda restaurant uh, you know, services kinda, uh, businesses because, uh, uh, they can't, can't stand the cash flow issues. Uh, when there's nothing coming in, but they come back there, when, when this is all over, and they wanna get started again, they're gonna need those people back. So uh, I'll get the word out to those business contacts that we have in town and, and make sure they're aware. We won't be handling any of that. It'll be up to them to go off and go, uh, apply for that, but they need to know that it's available. And I'll get the word out to them. So anybody got any questions on what we're doing with COVID? I guess everybody understands that we, uh, did lock down. We went to Level Three and we locked down the, the public access to the offices. Other than that, we're trying to keep, uh, keep the, the trains running. Any questions? No questions, let's move on.
Mayor Davini, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I wanted to ask you about, uh, people entering there at Skull's Crossing. And, you know, um, the reason why I'm asking is, uh, I saw a post of, you know, and it was regarding San Marcos, how they're not allowing people like to, to enter or like, you know, to hang out at the river, but is Skull's anything to do with the city, or can people just congregate there?
It is not a park. Um, they can't congregate, as in they, they still have to practice, uh, our, uh, social distancing practices, but, uh, we have not ever really restricted them from accessing that. And I'm not sure, Kent, I, you know, you, you weigh in on this, but I don't know that it's legal for us to go down there and, and do that.
No, I don't think so.
We guess we could pass some kind of an ordinance if we wanted to go do that, but, but right now there's nothing on the books that says that's illegal.
It's the social distancing is the thing that we would enforce.
Right. So what do they do to people who don't, uh, social distance? Are they giving warnings to them, or what's the consequence?
Right now, we're, the first thing we, we got the police officers doing is just trying to break them up and point it out. If, however, they, they ignore us, you know, give us the finger, do whatever they're, they're gonna go do that, that says, no, we're not doing this, you can't stop me. There is a, uh, in the disaster ordinance at the state level and at the disaster ordinance at the county level, which we are, which our disaster declaration, uh, said we're following the county's our financial fines that go along with that if we write them a citation, and we can lock them up. Now, the, the county really doesn't want us to be hauling a bunch of people over there to say, you know, put these in, in the, in the huskow, but, uh, so our direction is the, you know, be nice to first go around, but, uh, if, if we have to, we can, we can write a ticket. And I believe Harry told me you wrote one yesterday, so. Somebody that was, was ignoring the rules.
So wouldn't that pertain if you saw somebody gathering at Skull's Crossing when?
If, if, if they're not practicing social distancing, we can, we can go cite them.
Yeah, it's the same thing.
I haven't seen that. What I think I, Sonya was alluding to was there was about five trucks up there this afternoon. All parked. There wasn't a soul in there, but they were obviously, they'd gotten out and gone down there to the river. Last weekend, I saw some folks sitting in the river. That was obviously their family, but it was on the other side. So that's Guadalupe County again, out of our jurisdiction.
Okay.
And they, the kids were swimming is what they were doing. So that started falls in the essential activities, you know. Any other questions? You can see with the charts, I've been tracking this and trying to keep track of where we are in Caldwell County versus, uh, and the other surrounding counties. This was all in our trigger mechanisms. And you can see the scale is much different for the, for the, uh, state, of course, than it is for the counties, but, uh, Caldwell was holding best of all of them for, for a while, but we're, we're up to, I think the official number today was five at noon, but, but I saw something on the county website this afternoon that said there's gonna be another one tomorrow. So we're, we're really by today up at the sticks, so. And that's all been, let's see, the last time we were at one was
We'll set that.
This decade, yeah. So we've been growing by one almost every day now in Caldwell County, so.
Th- this is Jan. I, I have a question. Uh, will we be able, will we be notified if there's a, a case in Martindale? Through Caldwell County?
We're trying to get that. The initial response for the first one, two, up to four was they didn't have, Hector said that the, the county emergency manager said that he did not have that information. Uh, somehow Therio has gotten hold of their zip codes, and that would be good enough to tell us if they were, were close enough.
Okay.
Yeah, so we contacted, I contacted, uh, Ed, um, Hector from Caldwell County, the Emergency Management Coordinator, and Texas Department of Health Services. And I was unable to crack the nut on how we would receive a warning. Caldwell County Emergency Coordinator Hector, he, he does not receive the location. And the state passes it down to the local Regional Health Coordinator, the health authority, and then that person referred me back to Hector. So there was, there was a loop there. And it, it's all related to the HIPAA rules. They do not want to release anything that'd be in violation of HIPAA or infringe on somebody's rights. In those, so.
I, I, like I said, Therio somehow cracked the nut on the first four guys, and I think they're moving toward giving us zip codes uh, this week, but I can tell you the first four were not in seven, eight, six, five, five. The Lockhart, he had one, Luling, I believe, has the rest of them. So.
Okay. We'll keep us posted.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, on the, on the issue of enforcement, I don't, I, I don't, i- if it becomes a problem, I think there's also the way to handle it. You can handle it by, by the same, same mechanism with code enforcement through, through the city's court if you want to. It doesn't necessarily have to be Harry approaching someone and arresting them. The, the city has the ability to treat this as violation of the city's code.
Yeah, he can sign, give him a ticket.
Yes, but, I mean, because I'm, we've got, we've got two separate things. There's, here he has criminal authority within the city, through its code of ordinances, has the ability to to enforce its codes, not only through the code of ordinances, but through the local government code. So it's two different things. That, that's, that's what I'm, it's a distinction. I guess we can discuss more thoroughly later if you want to, but so, so that it doesn't appear as though the city is sending out Harry to arrest someone or criminally cite them. That, that's an option that the city has.
Okay, I guess I don't understand that.
Yeah, cite them for what? For being sick?
No, 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 no. We, we, we're talking about the, the gathering at Skull's Crossing.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
If you don't write them a ticket, how do you know who, who did walk in?
I, 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 I understand. I'm just, I'm just saying, this, this isn't something that necessarily goes to the county. It can be cited essentially as a violation of the city's code of ordinance.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. It can go to the municipal board, yes.
Yes, that's right.
Okay, I get it. I got it. That's the distinction. Okay, that's all I got for mayor's report. Jared?
Kent, I have one more comment, just a question.
Okay.
You, I got an email from, um, uh, Citizen, I guess, about what's happening behind Sack and Pack. Doesn't look like there's much going on. They got all that gravel, but
Yeah.
I don't know if that's part of our road maintenance, or is that them?
Oh, that's them. Yeah, I can, I can give you the, what I know about it is, of course, we have the, we have the great length, uh, green goo out there by, oh my God, it's awesome. We, we, this last summer, we had it tested by TCUQ. It wasn't sewage, just puddle water. Uh, summer comes along, dries up. We said, we tell Ally, he's gotta do something. Turns out Ally doesn't own that place. Ally rents it, okay, and, and, but he runs it. So he tried to work with the owner, saying, hey, you know, it's your property, come fix it. The property owner says, nope, it's your business, you go fix it. So they did a few months of that. Finally, Ally gave up and said, okay, I'm gonna go get me some gravel. So he got some gravel. By the time he got the gravel in there, guess what came back? Water, rain. And so they've been holding off spreading that to, uh, uh, for fear of making the problem worse or, or not really fixing it. So hopefully with the dry weather comes along this summer, he'll be able to get that spread out. You also saw the, the wreck. The building's been run into twice.
Oh, I didn't know, but the second time?
Yeah, the first time there was somebody parked and they stomped on the gas thinking it was in reverse and it was in forward, and it rained in the right-hand side. The second time happened since the first of the year. It was in January, early February, and a couple of kids fell asleep at five-thirty in the morning going home and, and, and plowed into it and started a fire, caught the car on fire and the building on fire. That's how come the pumps are down. Uh, nothing wrong with the pumps, but the electrical connections from the pumps through the inside where you gotta turn them on and turn them off, all that was destroyed. If you went by there today, you'd probably see a guy out there, um, with a jackhammer jacking it, you know, trying to get down where you can put the new wires in. That is a problem, as I noticed this afternoon. I don't think they have permits. We're gonna have to send Harry over there and go tell him, yeah, we did that. Anyway.
All right.
He also picked up some of those big rocks and tried, tried to stop cars from coming through the wall. So it all looks like crap. That's, you know, I, I, it, it all looks bad, but it's not because he's not trying to go off and go do something. It's just, it, it's a situation, so. That's what he's saying. Jared, you're up.
All right. So, all right, for the minister, uh, administrator's report, wanna cover a couple topics today. Um, first one, give you an update on the envisioned Martindale twenty-twenty-five strategic plan. Uh, this was related to Goal Two of my annual goals. And so I wanna give you an update on outreach. We, we did a lot of outreach efforts. We door flyers, direct mailers, put out signage in front of City Hall and near the post office, coordinated with members of the public to put out notices on social media, updated our website, worked with Lockhart Post-Register to post a newspaper article, and of course, uh, we had the Martindale Civic Day in March. So we did a lot of work there, resulted in two successfully held workshops. That was before the COVID-nineteen really shut us down and started creating the social distancing. But we did have forty-four completed surveys. We had near sixty access the survey, but only forty-four that were completed. So, the next couple of slides, I'll share kind of some high-level insights from those surveys. But the, um, providing you the data and submitting the research findings, I'll, I'll come in the next city council meeting. Um, if we have one later in April or the first part of May. The, after that, we'll develop the strategic plan document in future years. So, for going through to the next few slides, at the top of the screen, you'll see the survey question. The word cloud. And so a word cloud provides the, whatever words were used the most frequently are gonna be bigger and bolder than the rest. If these were the most twenty-used words in our survey response.
Hmm.
It doesn't give you the context of what the word was being used in or what it was referring to, but it gives you a kind of a pulse on the topics or areas that people had input on. So you can see that for what do you like most about Martindale? Old, community, small, river, quiet neighborhoods. Those were the things that people, um, described in their responses. I think what we'll see as we go through the slides, there, there's a, a few themes that show the strengths of what, how the perceptions of Martindale, and then a few things that, that hint towards possible areas of focus going, going forward. The next survey question we had was, where would you like the city government to focus future efforts? Not surprisingly, the, I guess the boldest word is the road. And parks is, and followed, followed by parks and business. You can also see that, that police and growth were also identified as, let's see, I just, this government focused efforts. The question was, why did you move to Martindale? Again, we see similar themes to first question, what do you like most about it? Let's make sense. Um, it's small, but here we started to learn a little bit more. To other cities. You can see San Marcos and Austin listed. So get a little more context. People like the country-friendly, family-friendly homes. So those are the, those are the areas where we identify strengths to make sure that in our strategic plan, it's those strengths and at least do not make them worse. And then what would you make, make you move from Martindale? Big and bold taxes. So the way that these questions are kinda set out, you have, you kinda, we have some questions that motivate different positive response and negative response. In terms of, of context. So here, what would make you move is a negative thing. So here, taxes, business development, um, Austin, jobs quality. Those are things that people would move from Martindale to, to pursue. And I think the context behind business development, word small and Austin, really refers, highlights the, the concern that people have with becoming just a drive-through town without character, where your business and development take, take off to the point where the community is not recognizable as it existed, or doesn't, or loses that feeling. Next one, if you were in charge, what would you change about Martindale? Similar to the first question we, we asked about what would you like focus, the kind of places the king or queen for a day. If you were in charge, what would, what would you do? Here we get some more idea about fixing and repairing things. Um, continues to be a theme within Eric's book. And then business and tax and development. So you can see that there, in some of these positive and negative responses, themes of businesses and development and community are, are somewhat in conflict in, in least the find the context, but understanding the nature of the question are in conflict, and there's, there's a tension there. Which is, I think, goes to what we'll see later in the slides on, in response about opportunities. What in this, here it is. What do you perceive are the greatest opportunities for the future of Martindale? And it's business, bringing people to town, the river, small town, growth in the downtown area. Improvement. And then you see San Marcos mentioned, you know, with the name of the river. So.
Why does, I, I've seen Marco written on there several times and with no S. Is there a reason?
Yeah, so I have not cracked the code on fixing that. What, what the software does is rem, scripts out S's as if they're plurals.
Uh.
It, it equates numbers in the singular or words in the singular or plural form together. And so it's stripping out the S in Marco, so it looks a little funky, but that's, that's what's happening. So with, when we're focusing on the strategic plan, I think the initiatives that, that we discuss as, as a city, as with you, as its representatives and leaders, are ways that we can enhance and focus and connect these themes, businesses, growth, downtown, small river. How do we make those things work together instead of at opposite ends? The next slide is what do you perceive are the greatest threats for the future of Martindale? The next slide is what do you perceive are the greatest threats for the future of Martindale? We have in here development, large growth, businesses. People. And that kind of describes, I think that there, it might be my own perception, I need to look into the data. There could be a development in certain areas and of types, but not universal. Along highway eight, obviously downtown is a place of strength that people view. But is the development along highway eighty or other parts of town may be viewed as a negative. And so we should that when we look at some of our land use stuff or what initiatives we we take on in the over the next five years.
So I see it.
And then what are the comments or insights? Less of a targeted answer, but you you get some responses. There are growth, there are cancelable, love home, the nice field, place to live. That's that's where that's what I received out of the surveys. Some of the responses I have the benefit of many workshops. Surveys only are only like a few layers and you can't dig into it the way you can in a workshop. Some of the other things that people that were brought out in the workshops, not in the surveys were you know, beautification of the city space and addressing and enforcing ordinance on the books, I think some of that's reflected here when they talk about police. This context, it was mainly driven at substandard buildings and nuisance lots and some of the beautification that we have like you see with the pack and sack or in other spots. And that was a real focus for one of the workshops was was also creating a an environment with more community feel and flavor, having a diversity of community programs happening with the city that address all segments of our society, ethnically, racially, age, and then just a variety of opportunities to do something in Martindale. So that's kind of that's that's the quick run through of where some of the initial insights I've seen on the any questions or comments or discussion on this before I move on?
Well, on this last slide, this is Jan. It I see council is one of the biggest words, what were some of the were there lots of comments about the council?
It mostly was in reference to statements such as the council should focus on this or the council should be it wasn't necessarily, you know, a activities of the council, not members of the council. When I read through them, that's what
Yeah, I understand. Thanks.
Anything else? So next item on the agenda for for the administrators, it's the website. So made a number of updates to the website, including making additional use of the news and announcements features. We've updated and enhanced our email and text alerting capabilities. Hopefully, everybody received a trifold of how to do that. And one of the recent city mailers, I encourage you yourselves and you can encourage your friends and family in the city to sign up. It's very useful for especially during the period of COVID nineteen, if there's city updates that we need to make. It's a way to direct contact and you're not going to get spam often, but when there's something important, you'll you'll receive a news alert. You can also set it to alert you for different notifications such as new agendas or meeting announcements and you can control how much content you Some of the other website updates we did were successful in uploading a number of historical ordinances. We were progressing very quickly through scanning and uploading documents. For the COVID nineteen response took away our intern who was doing that work. So hopefully that that will get restarted when the emergency declaration, stay at home orders get lifted, but that might be sometime, so let's see what we can do, getting that progress in the future without him, but hopefully we can. One other news and notes I want to share was building and zoning. So spent some time updating the the city's webpage regarding building and zoning. That's I know from the city staff standpoint and possibly some members of council major focuses of inquiry that we received. So quickly wanted to point you to the website regarding zoning information. It's under the planning and zoning board, so under government, you can get there through planning and zoning. Or you can access it, the how do I learn about building and zoning regulations? It takes you to this page. I described what zoning is, has a number of links on to on the right for other land use regulations and those link to legal publishing website. Also includes a zoning map that if you click on will open the full size PDF for everybody to access. Has the property IDs very clearly, you can zoom in to a detailed level how to on zoning issues for future development or uses for people in the community. And then below the zoning map, each zone with the description of permitted uses and lots property development standards for each zone type in a town environment. Including, we have the use table copied and pasted here, so you can scroll down and see all the uses. This should make it much easier, it's a little more intuitive than going to American Legal for people who are not familiar with zoning issues and they're going to look at a bunch of words and it kind of turned off. It's a little more interactive, hopefully a little bit easier for people to understand and will I hope reduce some of the inquiry or at least quickly resolving. What I like to do is use what we did on the zoning apply it to our historical preservation districts, flood prevention and other things, other land use regulations that create a kind of go to webpages that address each of those. So wanted to quickly fill you in on that update.
Jared, on the right there where you where you have the links, does that go right to American Legal?
Yes, it does, so if you click on
If we update American Legal, then this all radically gets updated.
That's right, the
The only thing that will be time sensitive will be the map, is that right?
Yeah, the the map, if changes are made to the map, we'll have to update that link. And then this is a word copy and paste. And so whenever we have an updated, we'll just copy and paste down here. But in terms of these other links to the sign, to the side, you know, flood prevention.
How do you have revision control on that? Is your date at the bottom or is your?
Yeah, so I included the same ordinance references that are included legal publishing on the bottom of each.
Nice job, Jared.
Yeah, it looks good.
Thank you very much, that that is going to enable people to find what they typically call and ask me to send, so that's awesome, thank you.
Yeah, I'm also trying to figure out how we can make use of some of our technology that we have through Office three sixty and others. Especially with you Lisa Bing and Mike as chair and co-chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission and Board. It's more easily, we can more easily share documents and status updates with with city staff and yourselves who are interfacing with the developers. I know we looked at, we looked at a number of applications. It's one that I think has some promise that's free that we already buy now, so allows you to bring in apps such as can ban tiles and other things, so that's that's a coming soon next steps item. Then what we have, we still have a plenty of backlog on other website updates, including the ordinances and filling out some of the history organization, police blotter and and other updates. Where we're at today. The next item kind of flows from, yeah, you're good. Yeah, the next item is code of ordinance review project plan. So one of, we've talked about this on number occasions with the city council and then also internally as a city staff is the need to update existing code of ordinance. We've talked about especially the land use regulations, but others. This process is probably known to you, but just to set expectations quick picture, how I will, what the goal of what I want to achieve is to present to council this red line changes to existing code of ordinance items for your decision and input. For the next, going forward, I I intend to carve out an hour and two every afternoon I'm in the office to open up the code of ordinances and start going through and getting red line changes and to bring to council. When I and then not, I don't want to bring just, you know, change this word on this page to this or that. I want to come to you with a package of manageable information that also accounts for the interdependencies. So how building regulations and flooding influence, should influence or might influence zoning? And some of those things, accounting for all those those items. Instead of, we go chapter by chapter, eventually one chapter is going to be out of sync of another chapter. And so accounting for for those things. Similar to what we experienced when we went through our utilities, solid waste and wastewater, where we had different billing practices. I don't want to get in that same problem by going through updates, I want to look at it as a whole and bring you a manageable set of so we might be in different sections at different times, but hopefully on the same.
So we are, Jared?
Yes.
We are keeping American Legal?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And we we sent them a number of updates and we should have those, I would think in the next month or so. We need to reach out and follow up on where they're at with that, but I know we sent them a bunch of them.
Yeah, the thought process, that that's probably me that is the one that the coke would hear on on slowing things down. But you know, I never did like the idea of having to go pay a month or six weeks or eight weeks or how long they they take to go updated and then pay them for the privilege of waiting when basically we were we were capable of doing all that ourselves. At least from the hundred thousand foot level, when you get out and try to go make that happen. We just don't have the staff right now or the know how. And so I I changed, I jumped horses and said, let's go keep American Legal and and let us go slow down on on trying to do that and get the words right and the and the meaning right inside the ordinance.
I I agree. I think you did right.
So our priority is to look at our land use regulations at first. Excuse me, including owning flood and building. Making sure that we have the latest, we're referencing the latest maps and the latest codes and those items. And then understanding how how we may need to look at other changes. So if you have input or thoughts or areas, feel free to send them to me during email, then I'll we'll see if how we address those internally and then bring them to you.
So if we go on American Legal, will it already be redlined so we can be able to sit and review it?
So I intend to, I have a Word document version of what is on American Legal.
Oh, okay.
Go through and track changes within Microsoft Word and make edits. That may that may change as we go forward, but that's that's my intention at first.
Alright, sounds like a plan.
Alright, and that concludes my report.
Alright, brings us up to the financial report, so Dwayne is and he was here earlier, surely, there he is.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you're a little quiet.
Oh, I'm a little quiet, alright, let me get my computer closer. Alright, so I guess the first one we need to find is the the general fund, I'm sorry, the cash balance report. There we go, so you see our our cash balances at the end of March. Over at First Lockhart Bank in our operating accounts, we have about a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. And by the way, March thirty first is halfway through the fiscal year. So we have about a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars in our operating accounts. You see our emergency fund is now at two hundred and seven thousand. That's after transferring the money that you guys approved last month. That that balance is now over two hundred and I believe the the plan is to get it to two fifty. So so that that is at that level. You see the the PFIA fund where where the excess cash is is kept is at two hundred and forty thousand dollars. And then you see the long term capital fund, nothing's been happening with the capital fund at this point. And you see the comptroller number, so the cash, the cash position is good. The property taxes are flowing in on schedule, actually at a at a better rate than the prior year. So that's good to see. Alright, our next report would be the one just to the right of it there, the general fund budget. You see the revenues at four hundred and fifty seven thousand through half the year, that's eighty percent of our revenues. You see the top line item, property taxes ninety five point nine percent.
Hey, Dwayne, can I interrupt? Can you point with your mouse where you're at? Yes.
I think Jared may need to, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So you see the the property tax revenue, it's ninety five point nine percent in. We got another couple thousand dollars right after the first of the month, so we're at about ninety six and a half percent of our collection on property taxes. So so that is looking good. The we're fifty percent through the year, so if we look down through you know, another one that we've collected that we're way ahead on collections is hotel tax. That money continues to come in monthly, almost weekly. As we you know, I guess that's probably gonna come to a grinding halt, if not stop, with all of our lack of tourism, I would I would suppose. Then expenses, you see personnel, you see the various line items there, they're forty six point nine percent is the total. If fifty percent is the goal, you can see we're 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 doing well on that. Yeah. Okay, and then we have our operating expenses as we as we track down through those, see if any of those look to be out of line.
Dwayne, why is workman's comp insurance at seventy one point six?
You know, that that premium is paid kind of front loaded.
Okay.
And then at the end of the year, it's audited and you know, and it's possible that that expense is gonna exceed budget for the year because I do know that the payroll numbers had to be adjusted up at the end of last year. You know, we went all last year with payroll under budget, but I believe it was still higher than prior year. And that, that's the basis for the workers' comp. It's not because we've had any claims or anything like that.
Should we look at budgeting more than next year when we get to budget?
Yeah, yeah, we'll probably, we'll probably need to.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll leave that to you to remember.
Okay, yeah.
All right, I'm looking at other line items here. There are a few of them that are over, utilities, telephone, just, but nothing major. Total operating expenses on the next page, you see it 43.4%. So that's good. And then our next section is kind of other income and expense. That's where you see court expenses and then other things that are contracted out. And the only thing there that looks over, we've got a little bit, our website bill. You see that website expense on 8036. That bill came in for the year and that check just went in the mail today. And the only other one that's over is a library and that's, that's really on schedule. That their second payment was March 1st. And so there you go. You see those expenses are at, at 45% of budget. 45.6, so all looks well. I don't see anything jumping out at us there. The next would be, let's see. General fund vendor balance, I think it's the first one on the left. So that, this report is your, all of the checks that were written last month. So you kind of scroll through that and see, there's that one I think I saw for the website. Yeah. Yeah, and then there's another big one there to the auditor. For that, there's the library. And and then, oh, and there's Ruben, the janitor. You see a lot more payments or invoices to him. Cause he's coming through and, and cleaning the office daily now. We're utilizing FEMA grant money for that, so that should not have a negative effect on the budget.
We're going to try to utilize the FEMA money, yeah. It is, we ain't got it too.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, Texas Patcher, yeah, looks like we, we paid a, a big payment to him.
So who was that?
He's the, the pothole guy.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Has that shiny truck that he goes around and fixes the holes.
Yeah.
That's him, okay. So that, that's your, that's your vendor payments. Okay, and then the next thing we would look at, yeah, utility fund budget. So you see our revenues are at 48.6. So that is just a little bit behind, but you know, if you look up at the first two lines, the wastewater and the solid waste, those are both right, right there at 50%. So, so that's good. And then you see the expenses are at 49.7. I imagine things are going to get a little, little out of, out of kilter over the next month or two as we've got some pretty large repair projects that are coming out in the utility side of things. So I'm not sure if we'll talk about those later.
I have a question.
Yes.
About fudge, go back to the bills. It's all about bill, but we don't know what they're for.
Yeah, not on this report, they don't.
The one we get for. Yeah, that.
Yeah.
What, what's all of that about?
Yeah, I'd have to send you a report to let you know, but there, you know, he, he fixes just about everything up there. He had to fix our roof yesterday. And it's the time of year where there's a lot of mowing going on.
Yeah.
Lot of grass growing.
So how, I'd like to know how he's billing us for that, I mean, charging us. I'd like to see that, what we're being billed for and what, how much.
Okay, well, I know Mr. Devini keeps a good ledger on that as well. They, they agree on all of the pricing on everything. And then, you know, I, I can print a report as to what it, it was.
Dwayne, can you, is there a way to put the account on there?
I, I don't think, not on.
Account, what, is that just because it's not wide enough to?
There's, it, it, it's probably possible. Those reports are, can be customized. So we can, we can look into that. I can, you know, probably with a little effort, I can, I can call it up on the screen, but that, that'll take a few minutes to see them exactly.
Where's that budget come, what's it coming out of?
Comes out of three places in there, but when you put them all together, one of them is the parks. When he mows the parks, we put it in the parks, which is another one is property maintenance, when he's mowing the locks that we have. And the other one is street road repair, when he's doing street mowing the, the right of ways on the road.
I, I just think it.
Oh, and we, we had him down there putting up signs because we got that stop sign taken out by that. And we had him go put up signs for the parks and we, you know, it's just miscellaneous stuff and somebody's got to go do, and he's the quickest and he's the one we, we, we get right, right away, so.
Well, you know, that, what I'm looking at is just in, as we grow, we might be looking at having to hire a maintenance person. And we just need to know, what are we paying this out for? Discern over all of that.
Absolutely. You know, the, the trick, we talked about this a while back, maybe two years ago, maybe during the budget process. Not just labor, but it's also equipment and stuff. And so if you put your mind, say that you're going to have a full-time person, that, you know, so, so $40,000 a year, or $48,000 a year is, is a round figure that you might throw in there. And then you have to go buy some equipment that goes on top of all of that. And then, of course, he doesn't, a lot of that money is not just, just to him personally. That's, that's the GM and the people he hires, sometimes he goes and hires.
Here, yeah, I understand that.
And so I kind of pictured in my mind that it, until we start paying about $100,000.
It's not worth it.
We're going to have to go buy equipment, we're going to have to go put that equipment somewhere. And so we're, we're, we got some property, we could go take our storage shed that is for regular kitchen right now and turn it into what it really could, ought to be used for, which is, you know, maybe equipment storage or something. Put it down there on Vantage Street or all the way down on Tree Lane or something. So there's things that can be done, but I don't believe we're close. I mean, it's going to be several years before we can decide that I think we can go do that. But trust me, I am with you on that. I would, I would much rather have an employee that I could, I know where they're going to be and I don't have to go track them down and I, you know, that's all that much easier on, on.
Okay. All righty, thank you.
Okay. So I guess back to the utility fund, where I think we were pretty much through that one. You could see that it's better than break even for the year, 37, 87 net income. So, so that's good. The next thing will be the, yeah, well, next one to the right, that's the payments out of the, out of the utility fund. You see that, there, you see some of those expenses already showing up for the lift station problem. You see where we were having to pay someone to pump the sewer and haul it away. This is for the one over by the apartments. And there's the largest bill, the Texas disposal, you see. Oh, and at the bottom, you see, that's the, that's the fellow that handles the sewer treatment plant and repairs related to that as well. So, okay. I think that is it for this section. The other reports are, are discussed in the consent section. So I believe that's the report for the general fund and the utility fund.
All right, Dwayne, thank you. That brings us to the court report. Tony, I saw you on there somewhere.
I'm here. Good evening, how's everybody doing? Good as can be expected.
Do we need to vote on that, on paying? We don't have to vote on anything? What? This report, oh, sorry, okay, go ahead. There's no bills to pay.
All right, everybody, this is the report. You can have Jared flip through it real quick. If you know, I don't know if everybody has their own copies or what, I guess not, since we're remote. But I'll answer any questions you might have. Numbers are down for obvious reasons, but everything, all the data is there.
Hey, Tony, I've got a, a question.
Sure.
We've got some more line items that we're collecting now that I want to make sure that, that Letty and I are putting them in the right pocket. So you and I need to get together sometime, I guess when you do your.
Yeah, I was there earlier and I, I know, let me, I'll call you and we can do it over the phone or, or conference or, or whatever. But yeah, no, I was, I was actually hoping to run into you earlier, but I, I can't, I get everybody's schedules mixed up. But yeah, we, we need to do that.
Uh, Jared, if you scroll back up a page, well, not that one, the next.
Yeah, the, I mean, when you compare this year with the last year, yeah.
No, I'm saying all these little line items, there are new line items on this report now. Like municipal court buildings security, maybe that's one that's already there.
Well, now, if you compare it to the last year, you can see, if you'll skip from page two to page four or whatever here, you can see that there are additional items, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, 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 we'll confer and we'll, we'll get that straight.
All right, sorry I missed you today.
No, no, it's, hey, everybody's schedules are nuts, so I was in and out.
Hey, Tony, for the, for the benefit of the council, can you describe what's going on in terms of scheduling court fees and processing fees and warrants? And how that might impact new, at least the timing of revenue collection with the court, with the COVID-19 responses?
Okay, you were going in and out, but I think I got, I got your question. As far as, I mean, we, the citations as of, you know, this month are, are down. And I know they're going to be down the next month. The collection activities by order of the, the Supreme Court and the Court of Criminal Appeals have pretty much ceased, okay? No new issue, warrants can be issued during this time. And so, you know, people call and pay up their warrants. They're, they're certainly, you know, we're, we're going to take anybody's money. But as far as pursuing a collection activity or issuing any new warrants, that's a no-go right now. So we're, we're going to be, the, the numbers are going to be down. But you know, that's, that's just a part of everything that we're going through right now. So that's to be expected, you know? Once we, you know, this is over, then, you know, we, whenever that will be, then we can resume collection activities and issuing warrants and that type of thing. But right now, the, the courts are, the, the high courts are taking a very dim view of any court that is trying to continue business as usual, issuing new warrants and, you know, sending people things to the mail and calling them on the phone about money that they owe the court right now. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Oh, okay, good.
I am, I'll tell you, tell you, Tony, and I'll tell the council as well. I am concerned that this is going to be the one of the areas that we're, we're under run revenue on. So we need to do everything we can when we pop out the other side to go, go catch back up.
Yes, yes, I agree. This is, we'll make it, you know, this is, nobody, yeah, this, we'll, we'll get through all this.
Okay, anybody got any other questions from Tony? Nope, all right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Police blotter is, got, came out late, but thank Jared's got it. And there it is, and Chief's not on, on tonight. He asked me if he needed to be here and I told him no, I didn't think he did, but, but y'all can fuss it, we can walk. But anybody got any questions on that, know what's going on?
I have a question. And Jared, this may be for you, this is, and maybe no one else is seeing or dealing with this, but I'm, I'm only able to see half of what is quote on your screen. And so is there any way that I can, I've, I've changed the view?
Let me swap what screen I'm presenting.
And maybe no one else is having that issue, I don't know, it may just be me.
No, I'm having, I mean, the way it's set up, yeah, I think if you minimize your view to one and then you drag it, maybe you can see most of the screen, it's, but it's, it's difficult.
Okay, and so what is, what is, what is the option that says request remote control? Is that, that means that I can move it around myself?
You can drag your box, your viewing thing, like down to the bottom of your screen? If you, if you have it set up that way, I'm sorry, Jared, go on, you know more about this than I do.
No, so if, let me go back, so right now I'm in presenting mode. You have a enter fullscreen and exit fullscreen option in your top right, it's going to look like a, like a hollow box.
Right, and I've got that.
So if you click on that and then possibly selecting speaker view instead of the Hollywood Squares version, that might, that might also help.
It was, it's just when you have a document, I can only see half of the document.
Okay.
That's what I'm talking about.
Because I'm using an oversized screen, so let me see if.
Our other, or is, does everybody else see the entire document?
I see both.
Yeah, I can see.
No, mine's obscured as well.
No, I see it all.
Lisa, what does your screen look like? Do you have like eight little windows?
Um, currently, all of the participants are on the right-hand side in the documents. I'm do, I'm doing the split screen, I guess.
Yes, well, I mean, do you have a box with like eight windows? Cause you can drag that to the bottom of your screen and basically move it out of the way. If you're doing, if you've got the same view that I've got, which is.
Or you can select thumbnail or gallery view.
Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt.
You can minimize all the pictures of everybody.
Right, right, okay, I'll just keep playing with it and figuring it out. Sorry for the interruption, thank you very much.
Of course.
We'll get it figured out.
Okay, that takes us through the blotters. So we're on to the boards, the historic board, Craig's not on the line, but Carl. Carlton, you got your, can you, can you turn your mic on?
Yeah.
Got anything you want to report for the historic projects?
Basically, nothing neither. The only thing that was, that the commission attempted to do was look at an application from the water company about repainting the water tower. But that got put off because of illness or some family issue that Steve had and then got put off for lack of a floor.
Okay, I don't see Sam or anybody from the Parks Commission. Okay, I don't see Sam or anybody from the Parks Commission on here. Alicia, you want to talk about planning and zoning at all?
Oh, Lisa, here you are, mute.
Okay, yes, just a little bit, and really this may fall into our future agenda items. Basically, things have been quiet as far as P and Z goes. There've been a few permit-type things. I do have some questions that I may just submit to the mayor and to Kent after the meeting. But one thing that I had brought up before had to do with doing some type of, what I was calling a, you know, a specific use kind of roundup. There's several people in town that are wanting to apply for specific use permits, specifically for short-term rentals. And so, that's just something that I would like to kind of get on the docket and that we could be able to put on the website with the application, maybe even list out, here's the process that we go through. So our objective is for people to be informed, to not be afraid of it, to be able to know exactly what it's going to cost and what it's going to look like. And like I said, I've got a few people who are ready to go through it. I personally have volunteered to go through the process myself just for, as, basically to be an example. So anyway, that was really, that's really all that I had to say, other than thank you again, Jared, for the additional website work. That's fantastic, thank you.
All right, and then Joy and them have not come up for air since the COVID thing started. So they're not on today. I don't believe anybody's on from there. So we'll skip over them. That brings us to agenda item six, the consent items. There's some minutes, I think we have two sets of minutes. One from December 10th and one from March 10th of this year. And those came out pretty late, so if y'all want to push this off for the next time, I'll be willing to do that.
I would, I would request that we push it. Do you, do you need a motion for that?
We just need to make a motion to accept the accounts payable of that things.
And I'll make a motion that we accept the accounts payable as presented and that we table the minutes to our next meeting when we will have opportunity to review them.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Well, let's make a little roll call here. So we got, the motion was made by- And then Sonia said yay. So Mike?
Yay.
Jan?
Yay.
Mary?
Yay.
No, there are no nays, any nays. Motion passes five of them, thank you. That moves us to the discussion possible action section, and the only thing we had on there was our commemorative naming ordinance. We went over this, I believe it was in December of last year. And Jared, you're sort of the ramrod of that one, so can you pull it up?
All right, so this should not look much different from what we had as a discussion item in January. So in December, we went through a workshop, collected comments, did updates in a January, I believe it was January city council. And then that looked good at that time in discussion, and so this is bringing it back for approval. So we need a refresher, I'm willing to walk through the different elements again. The discussion's up to you, how can I help?
So let's go, let's go around room. Mike, you got anything you want to say, look, discuss on it?
I know comment, looks fine to me.
Mary?
No.
Jan?
I'm fine with it.
Lisa?
I'm good.
And Sonia? Did we lose her?
I'm good with it. I'm good.
So we have, we need a motion to go accept it.
I make a motion to accept ordinance number 2020-04-07 as presented.
I second.
Jan? Oh, we're going to go around the room again. Mike?
Yay.
Harry?
Yay.
And Lisa?
Yes.
Anybody got a no? That's the five of them. That's quick. You guys doing your homework. That brings us to, I did, I didn't discuss the park rules review. This one is also kind of late. In fact, I don't think y'all got anything on it. So Jared, I sent you something, if you got it. And we, this is discussion only, so this is just me trying to get it off the board here is what I'm trying to do. He's bringing it up.
So we're just reviewing the current rules, okay?
Just tell you what I know, and then we're going to go, I don't want to have, not here to have a vote or anything, just sharing information. So you can see on the left, that's a picture of her sign. So because it's hard to read, it looked like it's going to be hard to read, I tried to redo them over there on the right-hand side. Bullets are on the left. Now go to the next page if you don't mind, Jared. And so the chapter in our ordinances is chapter 93 that covers all of this. So you got that same list of all the stuff that's on the page there, and I went back and cross-referenced all the paragraphs out of the ordinance. So that you know, and so we talked a while back that these were guidelines, these weren't really just rules or they're not, they're not laws, they're guidelines. Well, that turns out that's wrong, this is really, you get fined for this, this is part of the law, the city law, except for the no nudity, I couldn't find that anywhere. So what we need to-
Except for the no what?
We don't, we don't, aren't they allowed? The state may stop it, but we don't stop that immediately. And so, so on the right-hand side, you kind of see things that I know of that I don't think we enforce that are on there, that we could be enforcing. Is, you know, you go down there on Sunday morning and there's beer cans all over the concrete step down at Allen Bar, Allen Mates. We let cars driving down there, we had some discussions with that a while back last summer when people were driving down into there. The lease law is kind of being enforced now, although I still have spotted a couple that, a couple of folks that come down there and they've been used to letting their dogs run, and they still do, but I, when we spotted, we seen when Harry and the boys down there to try to put a stop to that. I think we have a law against anybody under the age of eight being watched by somebody that isn't at least 18 years old or older. And my feeling is we, I don't know the names of the people, but I think I've seen folks, you know, their high school age, brother or sister going, taking the little ones over there, and that's actually against the rules. And then nobody picks up the dog food down there. So those are things that I know, that I feel like are probably not been enforced, enforced the way it's written. And what I'm asking you guys to do is go take a look at the chapter 93, you can get it off our webpage or get it off American Eagle. Look through there, and then at some point in time in the future meeting, we'll come back with one of these reviews of that particular ordinance and see if we want to tighten stuff up or loosen stuff up, and then we need to go start enforcing it like we write. That's all I wanted to share with you today, so you guys have that, and we'll move on. Any questions or comments that anybody wants to make over that? Going once?
Mayor Devini?
Yes, ma'am.
So right now, you said we're just going to study it, but, so the next time, then, that's whenever we're going to discuss if we want to ask questions about it?
Yeah, unless you've got questions right now you want to ask.
Well, what I'm seeing it says, do we want to enforce these as written, or do we want to change the ordinance?
That's what, that's my question to y'all, and I think we need to let everybody have time to think about that.
Yeah, I think we need to discuss some of these.
Yeah.
So.
That all-
Nadia make notes, huh?
Well, if it's an ordinance, an ordinance is an ordinance that needs to be enforced right now, correct?
Well.
Why do we have an ordinance? We're not going to enforce it.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, agree 100%, but we've set the expectations to with the city until we go, I mean, I don't want to go start enforcing something and all of a sudden everybody say, wait, 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 I can't do this. My kids come over there and have Bubba go watch them, they gotta do what it is across the street, why in the world do I need to go do this? So I think there's things in here we need to scratch and say, did they really do this right whenever it was written? You can look at the bottom, Jared, if you want to do, and see where, when we actually generated that ordinance. But I guess it was generated quite a while back and never has been updated.
Yeah, it looks like most of them were made 2008.
Yeah, I think they need to be revamped.
Can I say something? It would be, it would be nice if we could do this at a regular city council meeting.
This is-
Welcome to the table, Mike.
Yeah, I hope this is not normal, but, okay, we'll review it.
Yeah, let's jump off and get, put somebody in a position that can just back up. All right, with that, we will move on to future agenda items. We still got the road striping plan that's supposed to be out there. Library contracts coming up, and I'd like to try to do that maybe in May. She did put in the accreditation thing in March, and I do know that, because I know the person who does it. She, we should have, be ready to go then. Somebody brought up adopt the highway thing a while back. I don't have anything to speak to necessarily, still on the list. And then the specific use request roundup, I wrote that down, Lisa, that's what you mentioned a while ago.
Okay.
Has anybody else got something they want to stick on there?
I, and I actually have something, and maybe, maybe this is just internal and doesn't have to come before, I don't think it actually has to come before the council, but I consider this an opportunity to talk about it. I personally requested some, what I would call, marketing materials from TDS to, that could be included in our billing, in our utility bills. I don't know if anyone has contacted you, Mayor, or Jared about that. Anyway, so I requested that in, for the fact that we were postponing the citywide cleanup just to give more education to residents as to, here's the directives. This is what it looks like, this is where you need to go. So then that segues to, that could be on the website if it's not already, and if it is, I'm sorry that I missed it. You know, just, just an announcement that we're not having it, but this is how you can get rid of some of your, some of your bulky stuff that you might use the citywide cleanup for. The other thing, and this is just a personal observation, and so while, while we are requesting any information from TDS, which Jared, I do know that they will provide a PDF of marketing materials, I was actually trying to get them to print them for us. How many utility bills do we send out?
About 400, a little less.
That's, that's about what I thought. So I was requesting them to just, you know, based on the nature of the whole situation, could you just print them for us? That, that I haven't heard back on yet. But point being is that I would also like to see TDS provide new stickers for recycling and to have something on our website that is, you know, infographic, what you can and cannot recycle. There's, there's just a lot of people that do not know that your Walmart bags or your HEB bags are not recyclable. And, you know, a garden hose is not recyclable. That is those, both of those items are trash. And so the kicker is where I'm thinking about it is that, what I do know, and those of us who were able to attend the field trip, if you will, to TDS, all of that stuff, all recycled materials are sorted by hand once they arrive at the landfill. So the more responsible we are as a community, the less manpower they have to go through to sift through all the stuff that's not supposed to be there. So I would just like for us to be responsible, and it takes education to be that. So, thank you for letting-
Lisa?
Yes?
Do they have, so TDS has this information, handouts that we can put in the mail?
Well, I have requested, I have requested it. Their marketing department has the ability to put something together that is specific for Martindale. I know for certain that they can provide it in PDF format that we then would print. But just having it on the website, you know, getting a PDF of whatever it is that they're going to do and having it on the website would be beneficial.
Make a suggestion?
Yes.
They'll make a suggestion? Perhaps, perhaps TDS could have a sticker with all the rules more specifically, and they could put it on the trash can itself.
That was, that was what I just said. All the trash cans already do have some thing, some kind of information on it that's for the recycling. However, there's some stickers that are better.
Yeah, I'm going over here, folks, you know, what we've done is, is instead of talking about future agenda items, we're off-
Yeah, you got it.
Unannounced agenda items, so I'll put on there for one of the future agenda items, a TDS marketing plan. And we'll go cover it at the next meeting, but we shouldn't be rolling into how to solve this, right?
I have a comment, Rob, if you don't mind, that when we send out something through the mail, let's make sure that it's reviewed for typos.
Did we have some typos?
Yeah, there was one that wasn't very nice, but that's all right, I just wanted to say that.
Okay. Okay, I'll be interested, send it to me, that was what you're talking about. We tried to go-
I know you do.
At a couple of times.
Yeah, okay, you got it, Rob.
I have an agenda item I would like to be put up.
Okay.
And that is to review our ordinance for abandoned homes in the community.
There we go, Sonia.
We just need to have that, we need to have that track the local government code because it provides this pretty, pretty straightforward course of action on how that's handled.
Tell you what we have done, and what we ought to make this agenda item is a list of those that we have with pictures. Harry and Chris were out just yesterday running that down, and so first step I would think is let's go identify them. And Kent can help us walk through what we can go do about those.
I just, I just thought that it's important because just like we're going to go through and review the park ordinances and, you know, is that going to start being enforced? And I know that abandoned homes, that it is an ordinance that there should not be any abandoned homes in the community, and there are strict guidelines that you have to follow, so I just feel like we should also put that on the list while we're doing, you know, if we're going to enforce it or not.
I agree, I agree, Sonia, I agree, because, you know, we had the Clark Building downtown, and we were pretty strict on that, so I guess we need to probably review it, other buildings.
Yeah, yeah.
Typically, in the past, pardon me, typically in the past, the way that that's worked is, is once they've been identified, then the council would give direction to our city attorney if there's any documents that need to be filed or submitted. So yes, we need to definitely do that.
Okay. Any others?
One for me, Mayor, the strategic plan briefing, it can either be done in a workshop, I don't know if it'll be- good for the first of May, but maybe the middle of May.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second.
Mary, Mary moves. Sonia seconds. Lisa, you in favor?
I agree.
Jan, are you in favor?
In favor.
And Mike is.
I agree.
All right, stay safe. Keep your distance.
All right, have a good evening, folks.
Don't touch your face.
Okay.
All right.